Recognize your time is very important and as such, we really, really appreciate you taking the time to come and to be with us tonight. Give the credit, it was her idea for the town hall meeting and she's done ninety-nine point nine percent of all the work of the slide presentation of that, so very, very grateful for her and all the effort that she has done on this. You know, it's the kind of thing in which we try to be as open and as candid and transparent as we can in sharing information with our constituents. Kim and I, of course, represent the fifth district. We thought it was a good opportunity to allow our constituents to come and hear directly from us to be able to have the opportunity to ask questions or make comments as well. Wish for standing room only in the room, but you know, we've put the offer out there and what would not be missing in quantity, we certainly are not missing in quantity. So yeah, it's an honor to have you with us tonight and if you give us opportunity, the format as we're going to float tonight is we got a presentation prepared for which we will go through. Hopefully, we won't bore you too much and hopefully, we will talk fast enough and clear enough that we can move right along and things go as we planned. And once that has occurred, we will then open the floor up for questions and comments. Kim has some index cards in her hand and if you'd be so kind, everyone take one and that doesn't mean everyone needs to fill out and do whatever, but from a privacy standpoint or confidential standpoint, we would say, we'll pass them out, everybody takes one and if you've got some comments you want to make, they don't want to identify yourself, that's absolutely fine. Questions to ask, if you want to identify yourself, that's fine, but when we get to that portion, we'll just take them all up and nobody knows who did and who didn't, as we could say, and therefore, everybody again, is having the opportunity to have their things addressed or comments made toward without them having a public to get up and make a statement. But I doubt that anyone in this room fits that category, but we just want to be your meeting. We're here to serve you, we're here to do what we believe we can do to help move this county forward in a forward, in a positive way, and we need your input, we need your thoughts, we need your ideas to help us and guide us along the way. So at this time, I am going to turn this over to Kim and let her do some introductions and we will be showing the room. I apologize if you can have a week job done.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. I do want to say thank you so much for the press for coming. We appreciate some of our commissioners being here. We've got Commissioner Jim Bush, we've got Commissioner Janine Floyd, we appreciate them coming. We also have Mayor Andy Nugan and we appreciate him.
Oh, I'm glad you're a citizen tonight.
Okay, alright. And we appreciate Mr. Adam Melton for coming and he's the alderman and mayor there, so thank you so much. So we'll get started.
I'm going to give just a little bit of a history, don't know that any revelations are going to be shared at this point, but it sort of lays the groundwork of where our meeting is coming from tonight. It is hard to have any discussion in this county over the last few years and up to the present time without evolving around or eventually getting back to the financial situation that we find ourselves in. And the bottom line is very simple, we're in a financial crisis and a financial crunch from a standpoint of revenues being sufficient to support our expenditures. If we go back over about a ten-year period of time, maybe just a tad longer, we had a reserve back in oh eight, oh nine, maybe oh eight, oh seven would be more accurate, of about one point four million dollars and based upon our size of our expenditures, and everything I'm saying at this point is excluding the education side of it because the education in their budget and how it operates is not really a part of our conversation here tonight until we get to the very end and we do have some comments to make on the educational side. But the comments I'm making is in reference to what we would call our general fund for the most part, although we're going to break it down between the general fund, solid waste, avalanche, because they stand alone in revenue being put into those three pots and the expenses being generated out of those three pots to be reconciled as you go through the fiscal year. Now fiscal year, of course, runs from January one, I apologize, July one through June thirty of each year. But when we go back and we had the reserve of one point four, that was certainly adequate to cover the appropriations that we had in those three funds. However, expenses started to be increased and monies were being spent and a large chunk went to the...
Pause.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me okay without being like ready behind the mic? Are we okay?
This is a slide up on the screen if somebody can't see it as well. Totally running out.
And that is from oh nine up through the current fiscal year, which is eighteen nineteen year. So when you look at where we was at and the expenditures that occurred, that we ceded those funds and we get down to the old fifteen year where we're at twenty-eight thousand seven sixteen point five nine percent. Money cash as...
Any cash percentage?
Can you introduce this?
I did not, I failed.
I apologize and Kim, and Lori's got the opportunity to address us, but Lori Barnes?
Bernard.
Lori Bernard is here from the comptroller's office in Nashville and playing a very crucial role in the finances of County County, so folks, I understand your time has been well spent to have her to address us as well and what she has to say, so look forward to the comptroller's.
This is Mr. Bernard Assistant Director.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you coming to be with us tonight.
Glad to be here today.
We need to hear your thoughts.
She has a date.
So that's even better, it's getting better for yourself. Okay, so from a standpoint, our reserves was in good shape, reserves got spent to where in essence, that started this downward spiral of where it evolved, putting us in a situation where literally cash flow, cash flow became insufficient to cover us starting our new fiscal year on July one to be adequate to carry us into the major portion of our revenue came in, which is our property taxes. And certainly, there's revenues from other sources, sales packs and fees on licenses and hotel tax and only though I know, but by far, by far, the biggest buffer revenue comes from property taxes, which you as property owners realize that. So with that being said, then we find ourselves having to do something, and I'll repeat myself a few times as we go through this, and even though we're going to spend some quite a bit of time using numbers, I know that's getting boring and confusing, but the trend I want you to understand and take away is our cash reserve, by not having cash reserves, which means cash on hand to pay bills, to pay salaries, et cetera. From August basically through December, January, because a bulk of your tax revenue from property taxes do not come into February, you get a bump in December, you get a little bit more in January, but you must pay on February twenty-eighth unless you start paying penalties. And most people who intend to pay their property taxes on time will pay them in February. So what happened in between the August to January per se has gotten to the point that the last three years, fiscal years, we have had to literally borrow money to pay our bills. And I'll just stop there on that point and we will go into those when we get to the various cash flow sheets on the various departments. So the comptroller's office touched base with our leadership here in the county and said, folks, you've sort of got to get your act together because what you're doing cannot be sustained because it's not being financially responsible to your citizens. You can't spend more than you take in. So they said, you got to put together a plan and tell us how you're going to correct this situation. And here are the steps that the governing body, the county executive and our commissioners looked at this situation and said, okay, these are the things that we can do to help us turn this thing around and get us back going in a positive financial way. So I'm just not going to read everyone of those bullet points, but some of the major ones was gives you the tone of what we was committing ourselves to. In essence, we said we were going to set aside, begin to start working towards a balance budget and establish a goal of a million dollars within a five-year time span. So that was one commitment to make. We went on to say, in essence, that the county commission would stop their borrowing funds in order to pay the bills and therefore, stop the transit notes, which is what they're called, to not have that be required anymore. And we went on to actually take and said, okay, we're going to accomplish this, generate a million dollars, assuming that at the end of the sixteen seventeen fiscal year, we had a balance of two eighty, and of course, this now is being done, you'll see in February of twenty sixteen, and of course, based on what they were projecting forward on it before they were using the balances coming in play. And then the last bullet point I'll touch on, it just says, another step was to put all the commissioners on the budget committee along with three citizens from the county. And then as such, the commissioners will have workshops in order to get a better grip on a more routine basis and try to keep a better handle on the finances as well. The commissioners were all appointed and were all on the budget committee to be a party to and responsible for the help in the next year of fiscal budget. To be honest with you, I observed some of those meetings, not sure how well that works, you can actually have too many people on the committee. And that happened occasionally, so had good conversation for the most part, but most of the time, I think we run seventy-nine year groups on a budget committee with two to three citizens as part of that number in total. Okay, so then that was what the commissioners and county executive sort of stepped, but this was actually the resolution that was passed and put on record and submitted down to the comptroller's office to, in essence, I use the term make it official, in other words, sort of put it right in stone, say this is the plan, this is what we're going to do. And as such, more is reiterating the things that we've already said, but it's some good comments that were made on this because I think it does identify the reality of the situation, the mindset of the commissioners at the county at that time. It says, whereas the recent years, County County Tennessee yielded to the demands of elected officials, department heads and taxpayers on revenue expenditure matters resulting in overspending in the general fund and depletion of reserves. So that is a household true fact, actual fact, reality change, we would give that one a say. It says, whereas additional policies in terms of fiscal codes must be established in order to avoid future tax increases and to restore an adequate cash reserve, but at least one million dollars. So I think they got it, I think they made the right commitments and I believe they convinced the comptroller's office to say, okay, we understand the situation, we are going to, in essence, do better, make fiscal policy changes, that's going to make things turn the corner and start going in a positive way. They created a fund balance policy also at that time and I'm just going to quickly go down through that, so Kim, if you would just sort of touch upon some of the things. In case the cash and all steam, restricted fund balances and you would remember that statement because that's a big one and it's a violation that should never happen, what you're actually doing, you're spending immediate monies, monies that's already being identified and designated to only be used for a specific purpose, such as for a liver grant or a DUI road stops or goodness. What are most types of deals with grants and you qualify for that money based on specific needs that's been identified to be used for a specific purpose. So those monies are in the total of your account, but you don't touch that total for any other purposes. Okay, in our general fund budget, which is by far our biggest budget of those three, the general fund, the avalanche, solid waste, says the fund balance shall be sufficient to meet cash flow needs and available funds should also assist investment planning and is calculate twenty-five percent of the current year appropriations and just flip on to the next one if you would. And keep going. Under general debt service, there is a commitment under general debt, of course, the budget owed, you certainly got to pay. And there they said primary fund usually possible to pay for the county debt and the reserves should be calculated fifty percent of the current year appropriations on debt. Reason why I identified that one is under general fund and avalanche or solid waste, the reserve requires twenty-five percent, but on your debt, it is fifty percent of the account. And on the fund balance is lower than stated policy, county commission should consider increasing the revenue, reducing appropriations to adjust fund balance accordingly. And again, that's just common sense. The only way you control your revenues, expenses, as far as medium budget figures you have put down and achieving those is by controlling revenue, meaning raise taxes if you don't have enough and you need more, or trying to control expenses, you reduce expenses if you're trying to balance and revenues is a concern, which is this time in certain cases. And he'll just reiterate again, the process of summary of the fund balance, the general fund, then up there, the avalanche and solid waste is twenty-five percent of the total of appropriations with the debts, service fund, debt fund balance is fifty percent. Okay, that brings us up to almost current because this is June twenty-one of twenty eighteen that we get a letter from the comptroller's office. And this letter is acknowledging the review of our seventeen eighteen fiscal year budget. And under it, they have identified and shared with us what their concerns and what there is, you know, sort of getting in a little bit better shape, but I want to identify a couple of things that are identified in the letter that the comptroller sent to us. It says, and I'm going to read just a little bit more than what Kim has got there, he says, we have received the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget in terms of the projected revenues, the other available funds are not sufficient to meet anticipated expenditure for county's solid waste fund, the appropriation of five hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars exceeds available cash by five thousand three hundred and eight dollars. You cannot have a fund balance that is negative and is not needed by statute. So they called our hand on that account, saying you are spending more in solid waste in your seventeen eighteen budget, which is just the fiscal year ending that you had. Just a little ahead of myself, I'll just go ahead and say to reiterate my point, at that point, the commissioners voted to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund in order for that account to have a positive balance come June thirty. Otherwise, the comptroller model would be in a very unhappy calendar if we not give corrective action of that immediately. They all might go on to say, I consider it some budget, in February seventeen, the county's governing body adopted policies to recommend its financial challenges, which were addressed by this office. It appears based upon our review of the actual budget, that the county plans to make progress forward, implement its policies and improve its financial position. Those are those things that, action steps that were identified, the resolution that the commissioners passed and sent down. However, they come on and they indicate on the general fund, by the end of fiscal year of twenty eighteen, the second year of the plan, general fund is projected to end the year with a fund balance of five hundred thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, off target by sixteen thousand twenty-four, not too bad, but the next sentence is a killer. It is of concern, however, that as of June thirty twenty seventeen, this unassigned fund balance in the general fund was a negative of one hundred thirty-two thousand four fifty-five. So in essence, we have spent assigned money to pay bills that was already money dedicated, should not have been done. So we were just spending money that we had in front of what it was designated for, which violates, I don't know, all the statutes and accounting principles and all the above, but you just don't do it. That's just the fact, you just don't spend money that's already dedicated and definitely overrated. So anyway, they called our hand on that, just rapidly, so. And the last point I'll make on this letter, it says, the county should review the solid waste department sources, use of cash and determine how best to improve its financial operation. It should be noted that charges for services comprise only four percent of revenue from this special revenue fund, while allocation of company property tax is funds of majority operation. Reason why I identified that with the separate text, it states, says, you've got the capability of raising revenue from your solid wastes, such as stock and tire disposing, and I'm going to make a little bit of speech on that a little bit down the road. So they threw that one back in our face just a little bit and saying, okay, basically funding your solid waste a hundred percent off of property tax, you can do that. But there are other means to raise revenue under solid waste by imposing a tax and or use a fee on certain things and tires do follow that channel, so I'll get there and address that and just, I'll put the problem just a bit. Okay.
I'll just stop here and say, Brent, if you have any comments, you were late to report and glad to hear your time. The only thing that I'd like to bring back, if we could, if we could go back to the very slide that you had, Lori, did you talk through that trend, that ten-year trend, or where we were, just to kind of walk the dog on, I want to make sure everybody sees that.
He must be the son of Dan, walk the dog.
Yeah. Ms. Bernard has worked with us tirelessly, you know who I am, and this right here paints a unique picture, we uploaded it earlier, but I wanted to kind of go through that bottom line, and Lori, kind of explain the problem that we ran into in two thousand nine, what happened in ten, and then where we've kind of come, just kind of breakthrough.
Well, I'm Lori Bernard with the comptroller's office and I worked with the administration here for several years and we've been trying really hard to kind of figure out how to correct this ship. And I apologize for the numbers being small, if anybody needed. Well, one of the things I like to do is kind of look at trends, see where you were, where you are, how you got there and kind of paint a picture of what's going on here. And as Brent said, in two thousand nine, the county had an ending fund balance of about one point three million dollars. That's sufficient to run this government on an ongoing basis without needing for issuing tax and early anticipation notes. We'd love to see that kind of fund balance right now, but then over time, and for a variety of reasons, that fund balance declined. And we not only look at fund balance, but we really, we're very interested in cash, the ending cash balance, because right, you can't spend a fund balance, you can spend cash though, right? And the Tennessee Code annotated title four, chapter three, section three oh five, is the cash basis budget law, which every government in Tennessee has to follow. That means you have to have the cash available before you spend it. So that's one of the reasons we look at that very, very closely and I wish you could, if anybody could see that. But we started out in two thousand nine with cash available to spend about twenty percent and it deteriorated over the next few years and in two thousand fifteen fiscal year, it got down to point five nine percent, which is that number that Mr. Ronnie quoted to you earlier, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. At that point, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of thinking, whoa, wait a minute, something's going on, we got to do something here, so.
But that's an eight hundred thousand dollar delta between two thousand nine and seventeen.
Yeah, there was a big expense that was booked in two thousand ten, two thousand ten for economic community development, eight hundred three thousand dollars. Not sure exactly what that was about, but somebody in this room might, I don't know. But that's where a lot of the money went back then. But then a series of overspending and some other things got it down to point five nine percent. Now frankly, that's alarming. That's kind of why I'm here, you know, we kind of, we pay, we really pay attention to that. So since then, we've been really trying hard to work together with the county to figure out where to plug the holes and build that fund balance back up so you can operate your government, you don't have to worry about making payroll and paying insurance premiums and buying things like fire trucks and so forth. But at this point, it looks like we might end two thousand nineteen, which is next June, with about a half a million dollars, hoping, just down a little bit from last year. Last year's number was a little bit higher, but it was a little overinflated because we had some bills towards the end of the fiscal year that couldn't get paid, that were paid in July, August. So that number's a little high, but it really shouldn't, it shouldn't be. It was really more like three or four hundred thousand. So half a million is a little bit lower than the target where it should be right now, but hopefully, we're on the right track.
Can you move to the next portion? Thank you, Lori.
We'll dive into the general fund just a little bit deeper. I moved to earlier, the general fund by far is the biggest of our accounts that we deal with and you would not think of the county county government, that aside, education, okay? And it makes up of all the departments, I think above of all the elected heads of the departments, all under the general fund, sheriff, jail, ports, library, et cetera, et cetera, okay? Like I said, all the departments you would think of here where elected officials come into play. So it is a fund that we, I use the term pay a lot of teachers too, because most of the money's in that pot, but yet, the other two, solid waste and avalanche, are certainly on our radar sprint big time because of some reasons that we sort of already kept, looked into solid waste a little bit, we'll do more of that, but also with avalanche as well because they are concerns right now from our, the financial, where we need to be in those arenas too. So some other, just quick comments here, as we're right, keep in mind, we should have a twenty-five percent of that general fund and appropriations is roughly five and a half million dollars, so our fund balance as of, even though you might recall, the steps that is in place, we shoot for a million dollars of reserve buildup over a five-year period. And keep in mind, we're in the third year of that fiscal year, five-year plan right now. In order to reference that, we projected, give or take, a half a million dollars come six thirty nineteen, which is off target a little bit, but having said that, with the appropriation of five and a half million dollars in general fund, technically, mathematically, it works out to be one point three seven five, you should have a million, three seven five in that account. So if you would, slip up through the cash flow. And again, I know you can't see, so I'm just going to touch on a few of the highlight figures and make a few comments and then we'll keep going. Don't want to bore you too far depth on the figures, but Lori, a reference says, if you get a cash balance versus any cash balance, is the figures that we would look at and identify. We get it on July one of eighteen with those six hundred seventy-six dollars seven hundred fifteen showing in the account, okay? And Lori, I would make reference too, that was probably a number that we would love to have been there, but not having money to pay bills, we had some of those carrying over into July to be paid, which sort of brought that down. And just as a side note, just to acknowledge it as a fact, the sheriff actually returned his budgets, the jail and the sheriff's office, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. If that had not occurred, if that had been a budget amount that's been allocated, it would really knock that total bottom of the fell out of it, just to be blunt. All right, so we're projecting five hundred thirty-two, five hundred thirty-two, three hundred eighteen at the end of the fiscal year come June thirty of twenty nineteen. The other points I would make is move, if those would come down, if not, we'll just back up. Okay. Notice up there in August and September and October. Yeah. Here you will see, if you add up those three figures, that's a million dollars. We borrowed a million dollars from the education debt fund to have money to pay our bills and salaries, et cetera. To get us over here to February, where you'll see the top line of cash receipts is your revenue that's coming in anticipating, okay? As you can see, February is your big month, a million forty-two, December, in fact, we projected a million one eleven. But those two months are your two big months to build up your fund balance to, in essence, get us in the black again. Well, in essence, we're just floating on borrowing money those months to get us there. So we had borrowed a million dollars. If you look down here at eighteen, you'll notice it was nine hundred ten, one thirty-eight, far as the transit happened. So we did improve, we went from nine of ten to a million bucks from prior fiscal year to just past fiscal year that we are sitting here now. And of course, we repaid February, both instances, you'll know. And of course, we repaid February, both instances, you'll know there, we, the million dollars we repaid in February back here, we paid in December, uh, January and February, okay? So we paid back, but borrowed for the future to pay for the present, so you've got the whole is there, uh, type deal. So that's disappointing in the sense we actually borrowed more money this, this year than we did last year. And the fund balance actually went down, even though really that number over two hundred percent, it was inflated, it was not a legit number truly with bills that we paid on that. So anyway, we're hoping that five thirty-two, three one eight is supposed to be incorrect because we need it to be correct to try to get in the minds of the comptroller that we are making positive steps in the right direction, so as we can sort of get a little bit of this control back of this county and of us being able to take care of one of our, run our own business. Because right now, we're under the thumb of the comptroller, that's just a fact, that's the way it works. They stop us from borrowing, they stop us from buying fire trucks, they stop us from buying avalanches, because in their mindset is, you can't keep spending money and dig way out of the situation you're in. Just a fact. So they have a purpose to serve, they're a resource, they're there to help us, we need to lean on, and we are. But when all is said and done, we're the ones making decisions. Boss in our court, it's our responsibility, it's not theirs. But they have the oversight of holding our hand and the power to stop us when they're saying, no, can't go there, can't do that. But anyway, those are the points I would just tell, tell you to remember, we borrow me a buck, give or take, to float this, all this, go up to January in order to get the tax revenue, then we pay back. And this, this is the third year, and this is three years in a row now, we pull the same stuff, okay? And by the current year being higher than last year, you really say, we're not making progress, just, just being honest with you. We sit here and, and dress it up any way you want to, and smooth it over any way you want to, but when you go, you increase the amount you're borrowing, you're not making progress, okay? So the trend is, we ain't turned the corner yet. Okay. Let me get me, uh, through, just keep going.
Commissioner Brent, you'll turn it over. As you, as you can see, the biggest thing that, uh, when I took office, I felt like we had to do was try to control our expenses, because I knew the, I'd been a commissioner for the last four years, I looked at these spreadsheets, and again, this was something that we started working cash flow sheets probably roughly three years ago, four years ago, a couple of times, you know, we're trying to get us to use these documents on a, on a basis due to the fact, like I said, back in two thousand ten timeframe, you yanked eight hundred thousand dollars out of this, um, it, it's a problem. So, solid waste management, I'm not, I am the director, de facto the director of solid waste, so the only thing I needed to look at was, okay, what's my starting balance? Here, we, we take this right here, fifty-five thousand dollars, this fifty-five, four oh eight comes from here, fifty-five, four oh seven, this is about a little bit off, this is where I'm, this is where it's going to come, this is ending your fiscal year, two thousand eighteen, we bring that over here, we start. Now again, take that back down, right, and walk through. Again, we already had borrowed twenty-five thousand dollars. We took a trans note here in July of fifty-six, fifty-three, six, seventy-seven, and then we took another correction, uh, they borrowed money, a hundred thousand dollars from the, uh, general fund, a transfer. I, I, I wanted to do, again, and Lord, we'll talk to you later about why, why we had to do that, because the reason why we had to do that is that if you see these end balances here, we have eleven thousand five hundred, roughly forty-five, uh, forty dollars at the month of August, at the end of August. And I took off at office one September, we were spending, uh, roughly seventy-one thousand dollars in the month of July, we spent fifty-nine thousand dollars in the month of August, and, uh, we had basically a new contract come on board one September, and we, the only thing I needed to do as a manager of this account was to try to get this, uh, outflow number of, look at my expenses, my cash payments have gone from seventy-one thousand, fifty-nine thousand, to thirty-seven thousand, to fourteen thousand, three hundred and four. I know we got some discussions with the reason why it's happening. And, and the projection is again, this three twenty-eight, nine twenty-seven, that's a little bit at the end of the year, um, you have to subtract a hundred thousand dollars from that, you have to subtract fifty-three thousand, six, seventy-seven. The solid waste is on its way. The goal for me at the end of the year at solid waste is that we'll not have to transfer it over, and that we could actually operate, um, with, uh, with our own money. Uh, that is, that is a, I think, a decent goal, um, that we can get this next slide. And, and again, if y'all didn't know that Jim, I don't know where you feel comfortable talking about the op, data operations, I've had, uh...
Yeah, I don't know.
Jim, if you, if you want to talk about the, what the, I'll just tell you this, we have, uh, roughly six, seven different contracts, it's basically almost a privately run organization. We're taking household trash from four districts, five districts, um, from an individual, if they drive them up. Um, the mayor here, Woodbury, we know about the, the issue we got with the town of Woodbury, the trash compactor was broke roughly, uh, middle to late August, uh, it's, uh, pretty much been, um, abandoned, I just don't think it's, uh, worth, uh, the work, and the tonnage has, uh, dropped. And, uh, the bottom line and macro numbers is that we were having, back in August timeframe and July timeframe, we averaged six hundred tons of trash, uh, we were paying for to leave this county, and right now, we're averaging around, uh, three hundred ton, less than three hundred ton, a hundred and eighty-eight ton of trash. So we had probably roughly three hundred ton of trash coming from outside this county, and, uh, we tried to put a stop to that. Jim, do you feel comfortable, if you've got anything to add to this slide?
When everything come on board with the solid waste, as of the first of September, we were looking at quite a few disadvantages. Number one, all the trailers that had been used in the past, none of them would pass a DOT inspection to be on the road. They were hazardous. So therefore, uh, the frames were rusted out, uh, they were nonusable at all. Even if the compactor was in operation, the trailers could not be used. Speaking of the compactor, yeah, the hydraulics and all that stuff, the pump and everything went out of. Well, it would cost twenty thousand dollars just to implement the parts and so on, and that's not counting removing the cylinders and having to repack them, clean all the lines out of metal and everything that had been flushed through the system. Uh, the compactor itself, as far as metal fatigue, too many engine blocks, too many trees, too many fishing boats has been through it. It was busted out in pieces, even the runners were bent, and still are bent, but it's not, uh, state inspector came, soon as I come on board, he told me that he was glad that the thing was not operating no more, it was a hazard. And then he told me also that, you know, when we got ready to cut it up, he wanted to come up here and watch it go, right? So then, what we were up against, Mr. Mahoney and I, we start out looking for trailers. We drove all over the middle of Tennessee. I mean, we were looking at prices from eleven to twelve thousand dollars just for a used trailer, freight box. So, so, just so happened, we had looked up and, and found a, uh, company that leased trailers, different companies, out of Nashville, and we were fortunate enough to get them within three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars a piece. So that was a route we took, because they all had new brakes, they all had been serviced, all of them had been DOT inspected, had the paperwork in hand. So here we go, we're off and running. We've got three trailers now that we are utilizing for our trash. We're packing the trash and the trailers with the skid loader. When we first started out, we was averaging ten ton, now we're up to fourteen ton per load. And by doing that, we save as far as our transportation costs and our cost as far as the solid waste is concerned on our trips. We've had problems with, you know, everybody trying to get on board with what we were trying to do, which that's understandable, you know, once you start changing, you know, it's hard for people to, to change along with the times of what we were up against. Uh, soon as we got everything in operation, as far as the trash and everything, we got everything utilized there, then we went out and started looking for individuals that would purchase our cardboard, purchase our tin can material, purchase our metal, as y'all could see in the paper, that, you know, we took bids on our metal. We also let the capitalistic system take hold as far as bidding on our, our cardboard. We're selling our cardboard now, we just had, uh, one of our trailers just leave full of cardboard, and, uh, we're waiting on the weights and everything on it now. So far, our metal, we are doing great as far as our monies are concerned. Transportation cost on our metal, before September one, we were paying three hundred dollars just to transport one trailer to Ivy Bluff, just transportation cost. And that's using their trailer. Now we're down to a hundred dollars, and that's swapping out trailers. So we're saving two hundred dollars a load just by utilizing the system of going out and finding people that are willing to go ahead and use a process of bidding to save money. This is what it's all about. Let the system dictate what we can and cannot do. And from the get-go, that's what my policy's been at the solid waste. We let the process help us dictate what we can and cannot do. Right now, we're on an upward spiral as far as our income is concerned. As, uh, Brent said, the way we keep going now as far as our metal sales and our cardboard sales and what we're saving on transportation and what we're saving on, eventually on our solid waste, if the trend keeps going like we're going, we will not have to borrow no money at all at the end of fiscal year, and we will be self-sufficient to run with what it's on right now. So, you know, uh, I will say this, and this is true, I'm no longer talking as a commissioner, I'm talking as an individual. Since I've been at the government, it has been upsetting to see the waste that people in this county have done. I've seen children's clothes, I've seen adult clothes, to be just thrown away, perfectly good clothes, that could have been sent to the Methodist up here or any of the churches, could be donated for some other families that are in need, could use these clothes. I've seen furniture brought up there, that families that are, you know, are falling on hard times could use. Good furniture, couches, chairs. And this is what really bothers me. We have come to realize also, medical supplies, that has come from the health department, boxed up, brand new, not open, and they're throwing it in the trash. I started catching it, I called the ambulance people. Can you use this material that they've thrown away? Lord, yes, we can use it. Now ladies and gentlemen, these are your tax dollars. These are y'all's tax dollars at work, just to throw it away as trash, when there's nothing wrong with it to start with. I have three more boxes that were brought to the government. I called the ambulance service again. They took it and took it over to the hospital. What they can do, now ladies and gentlemen, y'all need to start asking questions. I mean, it's one thing to pay taxes, but when you're spending money on something that somebody else can use, and you're paying to have it, took off the solid waste when other families can use it, everybody should get together with this. I mean, it's amazing, it would really hurt your feelings if y'all just, any of y'all come up there with me for a week and see what the people in this community pose there that somebody else could use. It's depressing. But other than that, you know, we're on the upside of this, we're, we're going to continue to grow like we're growing. Uh, we've got, uh, people coming in that are going to look at our new site, and, uh, we're going to start talking about it, it's on the fourth, right, Brent?
Yeah, next, Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, we're going to have a meeting on it, on our new site preparation, and...
We got a slide.
And we've got a slide on it, we'll, we'll be showing. Uh, you know, things are on the upturn. So, you know, and one other thing, and, you know, I know this is some, it's a bone in somebody's size and they don't understand. Years ago, the people in this county voted to have a wheel tag stick. If you drove in this county, you lived in this county, it was up to the people to buy the wheel tags. That's the law. This is what the people voted on. And to this day, we have people getting their tags out of Love County, which I understand, you buy a car, whether it be in Manchester, Love County, Macam, or whatever, they, they would like for you to buy their tag because they get a proceeds of the tax sales. I understand that. But still, it is your responsibility as a person in this county to have a wheel sticker on your vehicle. Now, if it's a leased car, you don't have to put it on the tag, you can put it in your glove box, and you're fine. I understand that. But that's another issue that needs to be resolved. So, you know, and, and sure, you know, I wish everybody would talk to everybody about, you know, furniture, clothing that can be used by other people instead of throwing it in solid waste, and instead of us having to pay to take couches and chairs and stuff that can be used, and we're paying about a ton to get rid of something that somebody else can use. This needs to be addressed also. And that's all I've got to say. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. And if there's anything that I can ever help you with as far as your solid waste or whatever, feel free to come up, up there, I'll be glad to talk to anybody anytime. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, I just think a couple of comments, uh, Brent and Jim done an excellent job. First of all, thanks has done enough to Jim, uh, Bush for what he has done for this county since September one. He's truly, his life has been solid waste, literally, been up there daily, running the show. And thanks need to be expressed to Brent, open and love, just saying the words. There's one thing I learned on September first, second, third, and fourth, when I was up there quite a bit as well, but have been up there, hardly, there's little sense in other of leaving those stuff going on. Jim and Brent's been running the show. But Brent had my tough decision, rather than getting, of having to let people go that was working up there. And everybody needs jobs, those, those folks need jobs. Though when there's no money to pay, and you saw that coming down the road, there was no money to pay, you see this. no money to pay these people, you had to be honest and fair with them and, and tell them, look, we paid today, but shortly, six weeks down the road, we don't have the money to pay you. So you feel free to go and start looking for you a job elsewhere, and when you're ready to leave, you more than welcome to go. And they quickly left us and hopefully all of them found jobs, I heard, but just don't know if that's the case. I hope they, they did, I, I pretty do. But having said that, the point I learned on solid waste was, boy, there's one thing that doesn't stop, it's waste. All that stuff just started piling up, coming in instantly, and trailers was loaded up there and no place to put it and et cetera, et cetera. So that was a pain mode that required immediate attention, that Brent stepped in and I think done an outstanding job. People like Jim Bush, who's been there from day one and still is, taking up his personal time at no expense in this county, not been paid one cent. Other folks has helped, it's been Paul Bond and James Atkins, and it seems like I'm still missing someone else, and if I am, please let me add.
Glenn Naig.
Yes, Glenn Naig. Glenn Naig?
All of them.
Yes, yes, all of them. And so, you know, we are indeed, you, I, as citizens of this county, of the people willing to step up and help in a crisis situation to keep those gates open and to help the run of others where we are today. And we have made, we, they have made excellent progress in doing that, and really, if you get an opportunity, tell them things, do it more than once because it's they deserve.
May I say something else? This wouldn't be at all possible, what we're doing right now, if it wasn't for Sheriff Young.
That's true.
Okay? There is, there is no doubt that we would not be doing what we're doing right now without the help of the sheriff and his trust in us and his inmates. The crew I got right now, I couldn't ask for no better, uh, they've worked their tails off since the first of September. And if anybody's been up there and noticed the way it was before the first of September and the present day, I know y'all can say.